Good evening, everyone. Going to open up tonight's meeting for the Southampton Planning Board, May 1, 2019. And Keith Locke will be with us momentarily. He's running a little late. So before I start the continuance of the previous public hearing, we've got some building permits to weigh in on, so I think we'll do that before Keith gets here.
Just the agenda.
Just this?
And I'll bring them up over you guys there to take a look at, but we have La Plant Construction, who is doing a build on 240 County Road. And then we have Rick Trueheart doing one on 9 Birchwood Drive. We also have Ted Towne Jr. doing one at 14 Gun Road Extension, so...
Which is the first one?
This is La Plant Construction. Cindy, you want to come down?
Just looking at some building permits. Building permits.
Which one is this? This is La Plant?
Some County Road down the corner of Belimer and County. I actually drove by and saw this. There used to be a trailer on there years and years ago.
Looks like it's...
The whole lot is only 31,000 square feet, so they can't violate the 40,000 unless they go to their neighbors. So I think we're good there. Basically, we're looking for...
So they have the right frontage?
Yeah. Well, we're not approving the lot. What we're looking for is disturbance. This is really the stormwater management. If they disturb more than 40,000 square feet, then they have to apply for a permit.
I see.
But the whole lot is only 31,211, so...
So it's a building permit?
Well, no, this is not Trueheart. This is somebody else.
No, La Plant?
Yeah, La Plant. Yeah. Yes. So the whole lot's that size, so I think it's good. So I'm good with this one.
All right. Motion to approve the permit for La Plant Construction.
To approve?
Second.
Cindy moves. Jim, seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And this one here is for Rick Trueheart, 9 Birchwood Drive.
John, it's next to Tim and Karen. No, it's next, next to...
Absolutely.
You're on Birchwood, right?
I am.
It's on the back of the service.
Oh, it is way back there.
So where is he going to be putting the house?
The house is sitting on here.
Here it is. Here, Jim. Proposed three-bedroom dwelling. Way in back.
The driveway's coming off of Birchwood. Do they give us a disturbance? Do they do their work for us?
This is already a lot, isn't it?
Yes.
No, there's another one.
The frontage is on Glendale Road. The access is on Birchwood.
That's right there.
Yeah. The new house is here, and then there.
There's the...
Interesting. Thank you.
This is more of just a septic plant, right? This is what it looks like. What's this here? Minimum zoning. This is zoning.
It's 40. Minimum of land...
Oh, here we go. That's what we're looking for.
33?
33,000. And do they give us an envelope where they drew that, right?
Mm-hmm.
So there we go. And then here. Oh, the envelope. Because they're going to do the whole drive.
It's a long, skinny driveway.
Yeah.
And this, I think, is the conservation land back there. This property here.
Okay.
And do we need CONCOM to sign off because of being out of water?
If they're 200 feet away, so they're within... Really, like, we're... That would be up to CONCOM to sign this, I think, right?
They already signed it?
No, they didn't sign it, but they're going to review it.
Okay.
So here, they said they're not going to disturb more. They're only going to disturb 33,000 square feet, which is under the 40,000 limit, so...
I move to accept.
Second.
They have a motion on that. Cindy makes the motion. Jim, seconds. For Rick Trueheart, 9 Birchwood Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this one here is Ted Towne Jr., 14 Gun Road Extension. It looks to me like it's just an addition. An addition of a garage. 36 by 24.
Look at that. It's funny. All right. Yeah, it doesn't look like he's going to disturb. For disturbance, I think it's going to be fine.
So this is on Route 10 and Gun Road Extension? Is this the highway?
It's the highway. Iteration. I thought it was on Gun Road.
Gun Road Extension.
Yeah. There aren't much to go here, but it's just an addition.
Yeah, well, 36, 24 is less than...
Yeah. I have no problem with that. I make a motion to approve.
Jim makes a motion for Ted Towne Jr., 14 Gun Road Extension. Cindy, seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Let the record show that Keith Locke, our board member, has arrived. And all four of us sat in at the last continuation of this public hearing for Fitch Farm Estates on Pequot Road, owned by Andrew and Deborah Labouche, and it's prepared for by RGB Industries and Levecq Associates. So Rob Levecq from Levecq Associates will lead off and pick up where we left off the last meeting, addressing some of the questions and conditions that VHB, our consultant, had recommended.
For the record, while we're at Levecq, from Levecq Associates, it's Stephen Reckland, Ryan Gilher, for the proposed subdivision at Pequot Road. Fitch Farm Way now is the adjustment. Since the last public hearing, our offices reviewed the letter, the consent letter from VHB. We've gone through item by item, based on the sections of the regulations that VHB has referred to, provided a response there, too. Most of them, as you're aware, were pretty straightforward. We kind of just outlined any regulations. So we did provide... Have copies of the...
Thank you.
Thank you. So generally speaking, since the last public hearing, we had changed a couple, I call them, they're not really even major, but major items that I just want to point out. The names are changed from Fitch Farm Way, it sounds like Fitch Farm Estates, to Fitch Farm Way. The subdivision itself is generally the same, other than we switched the side, we have the sidewalk on. We have the sidewalk on one side, but it was requested that we switch it to the other side, which is even more logical, for probably several reasons. So it's still now on the south side. The rest of the changes were very minor in nature, related to the piping material and whatnot. And we have added an additional sheet. The additional sheet that I've added is right here. There's a site distance analysis. If I may give you my two copies, the separate sheet here.
This one looks like this.
I can share.
Is it underneath that?
Yep. Thank you.
It's this one. If you don't have it, there's one here.
So what you have on the board now is a site distance analysis. So as requested by VHB, we took a look, we've gone back out, we sent our survey crew back out to shoot some of the existing vegetation along Pequot Road.
Can I step away from this microphone? Will they be able to hear me, or?
You can probably...
They'll all hear you.
Yeah, I can yell, or?
I don't know if Cindy's mic will reach over that far, but...
Probably must have.
Want to bring that closer?
No. That's okay. I can figure it out. So if you're looking at the plan, north is to the right, at the bottom, where you see where the Pequot Road is. And on your plan, you'll see that the proposed subdivision road is coming off, we'll call it east to west. So we have, I think it's 20.5 feet back from the intersection. We have the driver's eye. From the driver's eye, we extend on either side, going out to show the site distance running in north-south direction on either end. So on one end, I believe, and I'm going to step forward here, we have, right here, this dash line represents the driver's eye, as that was the dash line. So we actually have pretty darn good site distance out there. When we were out there, there was just a little bit of vegetation right in here, which we did locate. We surveyed that information and provided that on the plan. There's really nothing in the line of sight that would need to be cleared out. However, I did talk to Mr. Gilher, and he's planning on, from this in here, he controls this vegetation in here, and he's planning on doing that anyway, in association with the lot one. So this area will be cleared out. Then you have kind of an open lawn area in front of the house on Route 34, and then there's a little bit of vegetation way back on the right-of-way. And then as you get a little bit farther down beyond our sheet here, there were some pines in front of the La Corrie property, which is this here, which we did locate. There's a couple of 10-inch, 12-inch, 18, 8, and 6-inch trees right along the edge. But as you can see, this is our site distance line, and there's really no obstructions within that area. We also look at the stopping site distance. We have the tables on the plan. This is the cross-section, just to show you that when you drive your eye, you can see vehicles traveling in your direction. And so we think we're in pretty good shape on that. That was really the big item for the last public hearing.
I'd like to comment, if I want to just hold you up a minute. Paul Forgot, who was our board member here, is a traffic engineer. He couldn't make the hearing, but he did listen to the tape version of this meeting the last time, and he was going to invoke the Mullen Rule if necessary, so he could sit on this, but he got called out to business in Boston this week. But he did look at the traffic area in that vicinity and the site distances, and he texted me earlier this week, and he said, "The site distances at the proposed entrance are adequate. I leave, I think they do not need a traffic study to address volumes or safety." However, the only comment I think that is worth addressing is having them trim back the vegetation at the intersection with Pequot.
Right. So we are planning to do that, and we do control that vegetation that he's talking about. There is a little bit outside of the right-of-way on the La Corrie property, but anything that would need to be cut back is... Granted, it's a little bit out of our site distance triangle, but we're certainly going to cut back what we can within the right-of-way. So there's... And it's really not mature vegetation. I did take some pictures of it, but it's pretty basic stuff. There's a small pine and a few other spindly little trees, maybe, you know, two-and-a-half-inch caliper at breast height. So nothing major. If it pleases the board, I'd like to go through the letter, probably skipping the basic items and then getting it...
Is that a question?
Sure.
Sounds great. You're going to trim back the vegetation, but what's... 10, 15 years from now, it grows back. Are they going to have... Is there any way we can allow the homeowners' association the right to trim that back?
Oh, so anything...
I think your question, in our site triangle, it's all within the right-of-way, so it can be cleared with, I guess, permission from the PDW. So I don't see that there's really a ownership issue.
I don't know. Am I looking at it wrong here? Is that... This area right here? Was there some problem?
Yeah, that's a little bit of directions off of the whole direction.
Okay, so it's this dash line, so these are the areas, and it's within the road shape?
Yeah, exactly. So this is the right-of-way line here, and then this dash line is...
Okay. But you were just telling us a minute ago that you had control of the property, and you could do that, but I didn't understand.
Yeah, so we have control of the property here, and then also the, any of the vegetation that you look closer, a little bit hard to see, the lighter, those are the trees that we located?
Yeah.
And we're looking on this one.
So those are on private property, technically?
Correct. These back here, they're getting an option in the site distance triangle.
Okay. So the ones you're going to trim are out here, you're saying?
Exactly, yeah. They're the right-of-way.
Okay. Any other questions on the site distance?
No. Hang on. All right. Hearing, can I... Is it okay to go through the letter? Great. I'm going to start on page one. I'm probably not going to read them all, if that's okay, because most of them are understood or no comment, but I'll read the ones that are deranged. So page one, I think we're good. We understand the comments. Page two, we're noting the comments, the comment about the homeowners' association agreement. So a lot of these items are... There's a, I think you have a form, a checklist, that what's required prior to endorsement. So obviously, a lot of these items will be provided prior to endorsement. Number 4.3.3.18 noted. The information has been added to the drawings, so this is about the centerline base information. So we have updated the drawings to include that. The 4.3.3.19, the centerline of the proposed roadway clearly stands out with a bold black line now. 4.3.3.26, we note that tree species must be approved by the tree warden. No problem. The 4.3 point... I'm just going to skip the 4.3.3 part, okay? So 27, the traffic analysis. So RLA has provided a site distance analysis, including selective trimming within Pequot Road as requested. So that's what we just talked about. Number 28, we'll provide a detailed construction cost estimate for all construction within the proposed roadway layout and/or public utility easements certified by a registered professional engineer prior to the endorsement of the approved definitive subdivision plans. So that's no problem. Obviously, we want to make sure, you know, once approved, or ideally approved, not being presumptuous, we would certainly provide that based on the final plan. The number 29, the roadway maintenance will be provided prior to endorsement of the approved definitive subdivision plan. And we have a pretty good O and M already, and I think we can, you know, kind of take what we have and just kind of mold that in and have Mr. Gilher coordinate with us on that. Number 30, roadway acceptance, we understand that. We've just noted that comment from VHB, which is logical. Design standards, we... Six, we're just confirming some of the requirements. So six, we're confirming the radii requirements, then the maximum length. We're under the maximum length. Horizontal curvature. The centerline roadway, that's all confirmed. Right-of-way width, this is, just to give you reference, 5.1.2, right-of-way width, confirmed. Minimum horizontal radius confirmed. The minimum stopping site distance, we have provided that. So that's been confirmed, both of those. Minimum intersection stopping site distance has been verified. See, the site distance analysis plan was provided for the record. And minimum straight line roadway distance confirmed. Maximum grade confirmed. Minimum radius at the roadway confirmed. Minimum right-of-way radius confirmed. Roadway gravel base, four inches confirmed. The tumulus concrete confirmed. Pavement width, 24 foot required, 24 provided, confirmed. Section pertains to existing roadways which the board deems inadequate to carry additional traffic generated by the proposed project. Pequot Road is an established roadway in the town, and this is the comment from VHB, obviously. Established roadway in the town and is based on a consistent width, while the decision to require reserved land from the project for future widening is the board's decision. It's VHB's opinion that the current roadway is sufficient to provide access to the nine-lot subdivision, and reserving of the land is not required. Confirmed. The easements, we... Electrical easements will be worked out with the power company upon approval of the subdivision. They typically want to see the approval first, then they'll put a work order in. The plans will be developed, and then we'll have easements based on those plans that we will be required to put into place. The open space, board shall discuss whether or not dedicated as a part of the lots or for open space gifted to the town as a park or a playground. We understand that that's part of the regulations. We have no comment on that. Stormwater runoff control, I believe we're in good shape there. Understood. Sewage, public sewer is not available. Confirmed that. Water, we understand the comment related to the connection to the public water supply. Planning board should seek comments from the water department. I believe there was, is there a letter from the water department or some sort of correspondence?
There was an email.
Okay. So we can provide that as well.
Did you... How come he didn't send that, a copy to me on that? Because I'm confused. That email, if he had a response from the water department?
Uh, I just...
Well, could that be read into the record, then, whatever the email is regarding?
The top is the beginning, right? Do you want to read all of the correspondence, or... Why don't I skip to the end? Let's say that for the end? Is that okay?
What was the question?
I think what they were looking for for water, we've confirmed that they're comfortable with the plan.
Right. Ryan Gilher, attorney of the college. What Tom had asked for was, he wanted a three-valve cluster installed in Pequot Road, which is shown here, so they could isolate Pequot Road if they ever needed to. He requested a third hydrant at the corner of Pequot and Fitch Farm Way, and he also asked that this hydrant in the back of the cul-de-sac was in line with the property line, so that originally it was more to the south. So if they went in to put in their driveway, the hydrant potentially couldn't be in the way at just in the center of the property line. It's not in the way. And the only other comment was, on the utility plan, the prior plan, they had Dr. Lion pipe that C900 is allowed. So these were the... And I can give you this, Paul, the comments from them back.
Yeah, I just want a copy of it for the folder here with the rest of it.
Okay.
So pretty much, three-valve cluster and a third hydrant.
Yeah. I'll forward you the email as well.
So, we're going to continue on? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. 6.3.1, we have a tracking pad. They've confirmed that. Note about the plan, on the plans about the tumulus berm shall not be cut by the house developers during the home construction. We understand that. Maximum catch basin spacing, 300 feet. Confirm that. Minimum drainage pipe diameter, we've confirmed that. Drainage pipe capacity, we've confirmed that. Drainage pipe shall be RCP. Applicant is requesting waiver to use high-density polyethylene. VHB had commented that this waiver request in waiver section would be, and would support the waiver if the pipes were televised after binder installation. So we understand that. It's logical to us. Next one is sidewalks. We've requested a waiver for the sidewalks to be only on one side. We understand that there'll be a requirement to pay into an improvement, a sidewalk improvement account, and I think we're all on the same page there.
Before you go any further on that, what's the analysis for any data regarding the sidewalk cost estimate to be paid in the payment and loop on?
So Mr. Gilher was going to be putting together a cost estimate for that, and we would provide that prior to endorsement of the plan. So it seemed like that was a logical thing, in case the sidewalk, you know, if you said, hey, extend it around, farther around the cul-de-sac, or whatever.
What was your take on that? You had a comment on that the last time.
I think the discussion had to do with whether it should be based upon private wages or prevailing wages. Because I agree that it should be based upon private wages, as if Mr. Gilher was a constructor himself.
Right.
Could I ask, too?
I'm going to take comments after Mr. Levecq gets through.
If there's relevant for that.
Yeah, it's going to wait till after he's done, and he'll ask the audience for their take on it.
I agree with you. What you're saying.
6.11, street lighting. No lighting has been provided. We understand if, you know, if lighting was deemed to be appropriate, we would certainly look at that. I think, I don't remember what you guys had said last time. I think, were you okay with no lighting?
Yes.
Okay. I think the guy next door was okay with no lighting as well.
Preferred.
Preferred, yeah.
Did not want it.
The two trees per lot, that's confirmed. Water supply protection district, we understand that that... The use of commercial fertilizers, a note has been added to the plan, so that people are aware of the limited use. The next one is the definitive subdivision plan, maximum impervious coverage. A note has been added to the plan to alert people of the maximum impervious coverage. Next one is erosion and sedimentation control, stormwater management. Talks about applicability. We've confirmed that. We understand what's applicable. The next one is exceptions listed. VHB confirms that none of the exceptions listed apply to this development. Confirm that. Stormwater management plans have been addressed, confirmed. Erosion control, confirmed. Ongoing stormwater maintenance agreement, not addressed. Long-term operation and maintenance plan, that was one of those items that's on the checklist for submittal prior to endorsement. The long-term operation and maintenance agreement will be submitted prior to endorsement of the definitive plan. The non-refundable permit fee, we understand that. That's been noted. The planning board should confirm, next one is, stormwater application has been circulated to the other boards. That's been noted. The application, I'm sorry, the applicant should provide estimated dates to the following inspections. All of the inspections will be provided, and those dates based on the construction schedule provided by Mr. Gilher prior to endorsement. The insurance, construction costs, the priority endorsement of the definitive plans. Next is stormwater management and erosion control, which I believe, everything on that page has been confirmed, which is really just the kind of a checklist. The next page has all been confirmed. I don't think there was any specific comments related to stormwater. The construction waste and hazardous spill prevention plan will be provided by the applicant prior to endorsement. General construction sequencing plan is noted on Sheet C3, but if there's anything that would be, the board would like in addition to that, that can be provided prior to endorsement. The stormwater management plan, performance standards, we understand the comments from the, I'm sorry, from VHB, and that's been confirmed. Stormwater management measures, same thing, confirmed. Specific design criteria, confirmed. Erosion and... Erosion and sedimentation control plan noted, confirmed, I guess. The next one is operation and maintenance inspection agreement, so that basically our O and M gets turned into an inspection agreement signed by the proponent prior to endorsement. The next is the electrical easement shall be confirmed with the electric utility company upon the recording of the approved subdivision plans. And then, there's a note required for erosion and sedimentation control, stormwater management bylaws should somebody disturb over forty thousand... Looks like I have a little, one too many zeros, perhaps? But it's supposed to be forty thousand square feet. And that's been added to the plan. And that, I believe, addresses the comments from the letter. So the approach that we would be taking would be consistent with the checklist that the town has. We've reviewed that, and a lot of the items that were, that are required, and we understand that, would be provided by the applicant upon approval prior to endorsement, so that all of those pieces and the legal aspects of different items on the list can be handled, provided to you in one comprehensive package. And then, you know, at your leisure, within your timeframe, you could endorse once that's been provided. That was the game plan.
All right, John, do you have any rebuttals or any other comments or questions regarding those issues?
I think the, like, in summary, I think...
Just go up and address yourself there, John. John Furman is here from V H B Associates, the town's consultant, the board's consultant.
Good evening. John Furman, V H B, so everyone can hear me. I think the bigger issue that was discussed was the site distance, because he really couldn't tell whether it mattered or not, and the analysis that was done kind of shows that they have in excess of what's required. The plan set, as I had commented during my initial review, basically was well-prepared, and you could see that they had gone through the requirements and had identified all the items. And this was really just kind of a fine-tuning of the requirements. He's responded back to everything that we had an open issue on. I think the work that's ahead of the board now is just to make sure that one section that's in your zoning code, that has all of the requirements that are needed before roadway is accepted, there's probably like twenty or thirty requirements, that needs to be put into your condition, so that they don't get forgotten. And that is a, it's a long list, and some of those you just can't do right now, because they have to be done after the roadway is constructed. So, that one section's very important. So, I haven't seen any of your other decisions that you've written, but I'm sure, I think this might be the second project that you've done under this new subdivision regulation. So hopefully, your first one included all of those, and, you know, they're all taken care of. But in, just in summary, we're good with the responses.
I just passed out to the board a letter for a waiver request. We wanted to make sure that that request was formally before the board. We've talked about sidewalks on one side of the street, but we have provided a letter for the record to request that waiver formally from that section. That's what I just passed out. Thank you.
No, I don't have any at this time.
Anyone from the audience would like to speak, state your name and address, please?
Dan Pellegrini, seventy-six Crook-Alege Road. I watched the last recording, wasn't able to attend due to work, and I noticed the sidewalk came up, and that was an exception that I had asked for at Quigley Road. And it was denied. And the reason that exception was denied is because I challenged the state wage over what I could put it in for, and the decision of this board was to go with the state wage. And the Pioneer Planning Commission actually weighed in and said, "I'm not going to put the sidewalk in around town, so you're going to have to use state wage, so you need to use that." So I actually asked for what my cost would be, and I was denied that from this board. So I would ask that going forward, and at this, that it is state wage, and there is not an arbitrary number that's put out there, because Mr. Gilherer is not going to put in the sidewalks around town, we're going to have to sub someone else out. So, again, you know, at the end of the day, that's got to be a business decision by the people putting in the subdivisions. Do I spend my money to put it in here, or do I, under a preset price per foot, which it's got to be state guidelines of what we're willing to pay or do pay for that per foot, that's what it should be, because that's what we're going to have to pay around town. So I would ask that you guys honor the precedence that was set, because I even, it is recorded, and that was May eighteenth. We went back and listened to that. I had my lawyer, who actually requested that I take the money that that side of the sidewalk was, and invest in Crook-Alege Road to fix it up as an option. Second to that, how much I would pay for the sidewalk to go in the fund, and was denied that, it would have to be at the state rate, which, once I saw the state rate, it was cheaper for me to put it in, and hence why I put the sidewalk in up there. So I would ask that you guys honor that precedent.
Well, I'm looking at the decision of your subdivision. And I'm looking at the...